Okay, it is 6:30 so I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Today is Thursday, September 11th, and this is the Olentangy School Board of Education Regular Meeting Work and Business Session. So I'll call the meeting to order. Mr. Kern, please call the roll.
Mr. Barts?
Here.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Here.
Mr. King?
Here.
Mr. White?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
I am here. Please join me in the pleasurable allegiance. [applause] The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next agenda item is approval of the agenda. Don't believe we have any amendments, addendums, etc. Okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, please call the roll, Mr. Kern.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Barts?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, our first presentation item, which is Agenda Item 5, is a presentation from the Honor of State. It's an award recognizing the results of the last district audit. I believe we have Mr. Tim Craft from the Honor of State's office. Welcome.
Yeah. Well, it's my honor to be here tonight. A lot of times when the Honor of State's office comes knocking on your door, it's not always a good thing, but tonight's one of those nights, it is a good thing. And it's my honor and my pleasure to be here tonight. Tonight we get to honor, tonight is my honor to present the award to Brian Kern. The Honor of State Award is not easy to attain. To do that, the Honor of State Award with distinction is given to those entities that file an annual CAFER and a timely financial report in accordance with GAAP as well as receive a clean audit report. A clean audit report means your financial audits do not contain a single finding for recover, material citation, material weakness, significant deficiencies, single audit findings, or any question of cost. That's a lot of words there, but I always try to put it in simple terms. The Honor of State's office audits somewhere around 5,800 public entities throughout the entire state of Ohio, and only 5% of those 5,800 qualify for this award. So this is not a award we give out a lot. This is not a award that we easily give out. We only give it out to the best. And tonight, Brian Kern and Olentangy School Districts have earned our award, so it's my honor, I'd like to present this award of treasure, Brian.
Terrific. Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Craft. Congratulations, Mr. Kern, and I'm sure to your whole office. That's a terrific accomplishment.
I'd like to recognize Emily Hatfield from our Assistant Treasurer here, who's here this evening also, too. About their hard work would make us look good, so.
That's right. It's always a good presentation. Okay, the next item is the Board President's Report, and I've got three items I want to cover tonight. So first, Mr. King and I had the opportunity to attend ALIS training last night with about 25 to 30 teachers and staff members from the district. The training was led by Ms. Iceman and Mr. Marsh from the H-Charred Department, as well as deputies from Delaware County Sheriff's Office. Deputy Vogel and Deputy Simila led the training. And I know Mr. Barts and Ms. Fiesel are also scheduled to attend the training, and I hope you enjoy it and learn as much as I did from it. From those not familiar with ALIS, it's a philosophy and approach to prepare our staff and protect our students should we ever be faced with an active shooter event. ALIS stands for Alert, Lockdown, Inform, Counter, and Evaluate. What I took away from the training was that we have passionate individuals working in and supporting the district who are committed to ensuring we're deploying effective strategies to protect our students and staff should some horrible event occur. I know I left the training feeling better and more confident about the safety of not just my children in the district, but of all the staff and children. Again, I recommend that all of us go through the training. It was incredibly rewarding. Dave Onsting, you want to add?
No, those are good comments. It was a powerful message. They did a lot of historical information on some of the schools that went through those terrible events, and the training sessions that we went through. I was really pleased to see how quickly the staff people in those training sessions adapted to this new philosophy, and they picked right up on it. It was just a very powerful experience.
Good. Terrific. Next, I want to spend a minute on Board Action Item B, and this is the lease for 7774 Graphics Way. As we've discussed in previous meetings, growth continues to be a challenge for the district. Just this year, we've welcomed another 600 to 700 new students, and while some of the growth patterns may be changing, more growth from the middle and high school, the growth is still very real. It's our job to work with the administration to identify and implement strategies to deal with the impact of this continued growth. To that end, I believe that the building of Graphics Way offers us an opportunity to add incremental space to the district in a flexible and cost-efficient manner. This is a unique property. It's 20,000 square feet of space. It's already configured for classroom, primarily for secondary students. It's a great location. Location is central to the district at Orange Road and 23, and it provides much-needed flexibility. It addresses near-term space issues with programs, or for programs like Oasis, which will also relieve space issues on this campus, as well as providing the flexibility for future programs like an AP Academy, a STEM Center, et cetera. Importantly, it's cost-effective as well. We're recommending to enter into a two-year lease with annual renewals thereafter, which also includes a purchase option. The structure of this opportunity is notable as well. I believe it's our first leasing of space, which gives us flexibility if we do want to pursue a purchase, and it also provides us the opportunity to put that choice in front of taxpayers via a vote consistent with how all of our building projects have been handled. I'm excited about this opportunity and recommend we move ahead and approve this action item this evening. Finally, I want to provide an update on the legal claims Mr. White has brought against this board, with exception to Mr. Barts, some 17 months ago. As you may recall, in April of 2013, Mr. White filed an action against the board alleging violations of Ohio's open meeting statutes. In January of 2014, Judge Krueger of the Court of Common Pleas in Delaware County ruled in the board's favor and dismissed Mr. White's claims against the board citing that there were no facts to support Mr. White's claims, and that the board had not violated the open meeting law. Mr. White appealed that ruling in February of 2014 to the Fifth District Court of Appeals. Earlier this week, on Monday, our counsel advised us that the appeals court had issued its ruling and had affirmed Judge Krueger's ruling. In the ruling, the court said, "We find no merit in the appellant's claim that the board's actions at that time somehow retroactively created a pre-arranged discussion of public business via email." Mr. White has 45 days or until October 20th to appeal this latest decision. So while the board was successful in defending its actions, it was forced to continue to expend valuable time and resources, resources that could have been put better use furthering the mission of the district. It's estimated that between $15,000 and $20,000 has now been invested in legal fees to support the successful defense of the board's position in this dispute with Mr. White. Okay? That's all I have in my President's Report. With that, we'll move on to Superintendent's Report.
Thank you. Many good things to talk about this evening, and several of these you've already touched upon, and I will not dwell upon them, but first and foremost, I think I went over this at the last board meeting, and it leads me right into the information or the news that will be released tomorrow from the Department of Education. We had perfect scores earned on the Spring OAA, 152 students across grades 3 through 8 in one or more test subjects. Again, I shared that with you at the last meeting. Tomorrow, the release of the district report card data is coming out, I believe it's at 11:00 a.m. Some of the things that, some of the highlights, first and foremost, would be the Performance Index score of 108.7. Again, that's the highest we've ever had. I believe last year, we were at 107.5, and now we're up to 108.7, and as we've had our conversations in our goal meetings, we also know that the board is requesting that we continue to increase that, which I believe we have done over the past six years. So the heat is on Mr. Rafe, as they say. But before we talk about the heat, I have to talk about the efforts and the job that has been done, not only with Mr. Rafe specifically and his colleagues here in Central Office, but right on down the line to the teachers and administrators in the buildings, the students, obviously, and the parents, and last but not least, the community who gives us the support that we need. Great, great job. All As. If you recall, last year, we had six As, three Bs, and, you know, we were somewhat down in the mouth, but we said our goal was all As, and we're not there yet. We're just about there. We have eight As now and one B, and we won't be satisfied until all of our district, our entire district, and all of our buildings. And that data will be coming out also, but again, we had As in progress, growth, overall gifted, students' disabilities, lowest 20%. The P.I., if you hit 108, that's also an A, obviously, and the B that we did receive, by the way, was in GAAP closing. So we're looking at that as we speak, and just a great, great job across the district. We have great people that work extremely hard and take great pride. I don't know where that ranks in regard to surrounding districts or statewide, but I know that puts us up there, very, very close to the top. We have had talks, and Upper Arlington may have nudged us out in Performance Index, but I believe that's probably it. But again, when that officially comes out tomorrow, we'll talk more about that. But can't say enough about the efforts of many, many people, and we are extremely blessed to have individuals like we have in our community. Next, we had discussion items. You will hear from two groups this evening that we pretty well bring to you on a yearly basis. Chris Saunders will be representing People Services. He'll talk about the programs. He'll talk about the professional development that we offer to our staff members, and he will talk about the needs that, which we have not only talked about for a long, long time, but we're already looking at next year in regard to the needs of People Services. So that report will be coming up, and then Jody Clark will have her transportation update. Start of school, how it went. I can say this, and again, we talked about this at the last board meeting, did not hear a whole lot. We have 150-some buses transporting thousands of students, so you're going to hear something. I'm sure Jody heard a lot. I did not hear anything, and as they say in my world, no news is good news. She's also going to update the bus replacement schedule. If you recall, Mr. Thompson was here several years ago with a 20-year bus replacement cycle, and she's going to update that bus replacement schedule for you this evening. Board Action Items, Mr. O'Brien already talked a little bit about this, so I'm not going to say much about it. It is the OSU Building on 23. Additional programming space in the district is very important and allows us approximately 18 classrooms. I can tell you that when Ohio State was there, they had roughly 1,000 students in there. Now granted, they can go morning, evening, weekends. We think we can open up enough space for approximately 600 students. It is something that we have been looking at for a while. I know several of you, in fact, most of you, I believe, have taken tours of the OSU Building, and it's one of those buildings that is already configured for education purposes, and you don't see very many of those because, again, most of you have also toured other buildings in the district, and we know that what it would cost to get those up and in education shape, and this is a great, great opportunity for us, so we're looking forward to moving into that facility. Other Superintendent Action Items, and again, this kind of goes along with Mr. O'Brien's talk about ALIS training, and by the way, all staff members have been trained from an ALIS training standpoint. We took care of that last year, both certified and classified. On the agenda tonight, you'll have requests for digital equipment funded by grant dollars, that's the security cameras. You also see ongoing safety initiatives, emergency response radios, and of course, our summer project included some outdoor lighting. So safety is always at the forefront of what we take advantage of and try to improve, and we will continue to do so. This one came along, and it's like, wow, it's September, and we're talking about road salt. Well, again, if you've been following the news, you know that a lot of people are scrambling for road salt, and that was due to last year, obviously. So we do have the purchase of a lot of road salt that will get us through this winter on this agenda, and I have to credit Jeff Gordon for going out and shaking the bushes to make sure we have what we need, because the Farmer's Almanac also says it's going to be another winter like last winter. Not to, you know, put any bad karma on the meeting or anything like that, but it's better safe than sorry to be well-prepared, as they say. Upcoming Events, tonight, we started with Instructional Technology Parent Nights. As you know, we have many programs from a technology standpoint for our parents, and we are starting this evening with the middle school, all taking place at Olentangy High School next week, and we'll have both high school and elementary, so we invite all of our parents out for our Instructional Technology Parent Night. Also, next Monday, we will have the first of a Drug Task Force meeting sponsored and facilitated by the Attorney General's Office. That's at Columbus State, Moeller Hall, from 6:00 to 9:00, and we have talked about that, and we'll continue to update you as we proceed with that Drug Task Force. OEF Golf Outing and Fundraiser will be September 22nd. Registration begins at 11:00 o'clock, and that will be at the Lakes Golf and Country Club. It will be the year that we finally win it.
Did you say finally?
Finally. Last year, I think we lost by one, but, you know, we have a special ringer that we're not telling anyone about.
Yeah, I guess that's not right.
So it's always a great time, and of course, it goes to a great, great cause. That would go to our staff and our students in the Olentangy School District, and we do thank OEF for the work that they do. That's one of their two major fundraisers, by the way, and they do a great, great job, so we invite everyone out to that. With that said and done, I would entertain any questions that the board may have at this time.
Just one quick one, Dr. Lucas, on the camera purchase.
Yes.
Does the addition of those cameras do anything to affect our liability insurance lowering that cost, or does it?
Normally it does, but Mr. Gordon, I'm going to defer it.
I can address that question, too.
Normally that does, yes.
He was just right here.
Yeah, I thought he was just in here. Mr. Kern, do you know whether, normally it does, it would be just like, and that's the first of about a three-phase piece also.
Fine, thank you.
Okay. On the report cards, similar to last year, we'll have a couple sessions that we'll go through.
Yes.
Building by building, strengths and opportunities.
Four meetings from last year, and I think it went over very well because they're, sometimes it's like drinking from a fire hose, and we bring it to you and break it down, so we will start that process probably, probably the last meeting, the next business meeting in September, and work that through, which in turn, by the way, will lead us right into the enrollment projection piece and the long-term build-out plan. So over the next, you know, three months, we have a lot of information coming at you, and we will break it down so that it is easier to digest.
Terrific.
All right?
Anything else for Dr. Lucas?
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Mr. Kern, the Treasurer Report?
Yes, just a few things for this evening for Treasurer Action Items on tonight's agenda. The first one would be extension of letter engagement with Aon Hewitt, who is our insurance broker consultant. Their agreement is to end here September 30th. We're going to extend their contract for, recommending extending their contract for six months. At that time, we'll look to do an RFP for Broker Services and ask other agencies along with Aon Hewitt. It's not like we're unhappy with them, just doing our due diligence. The reason not doing it this time is, you know, as I've mentioned before in previous Treasurer Updates, we're going through the medical insurance RFP. They've been, they've started with the process, and I'd like to carry them through the whole process. We'd like to make a decision by, probably by October 1st here. I'd offer you, there's a great book of data that I have out there if anyone's interested in looking, it's probably about this thick of information, so. But they want to change brokers or go through another RFP process at the same time, hence the request for a six-month extension. Also on this evening is Agreement for Wellness Services with Mount Carmel Health System. We are utilizing dollars from our insurance carriers. Even as far as I mentioned the RFP process, we'll continue to get $100,000 each year to pay for wellness services. Mount Carmel will be doing, probably, I think I've mentioned before, they'll be doing a person be at each building at least once a month. They only do like Lunch and Learns, Wellness Health Coaching. They'll even be doing fitness classes at each building. So we're really looking forward to this. This is only kickoff here October 1st. Actually, I think we're only kicking off at Liberty High School because Dr. Lucas and I would be there that day doing the staff meeting, so that'd be a perfect opportunity to throw, let the staff know and introduce them to our health coach and stuff. So that's all I have for this evening. One other thing, too, just a reminder, we have our Finance and Audit Committee ending the September 24th to go over the five-year forecast assumptions. That is open to anybody, so.
Okay. Is this the OSBA Central Region Meeting, is the 24th?
Mm-hmm.
So, at the same time.
Yeah. I scheduled mine first.
Yes, you did, yes. Sorry. Good. Anything else for Mr. Kern, any questions, Mr. Kern? Okay, the next agenda item is Item 9, Public Participation. Any comments?
Done.
Okay, we'll move on to the discussion items. So first up is the People Services Update. Mr. Saunders?
Then somebody else can do it. Thank you so much for having me tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk about the People Services, the People Services Department. So annually, I come up and talk about information on our department. We like to talk about our strengths, our areas of improvement, and future plans in professional development. You know, we, and I'll say this in a little bit, we're so proud that we have an A for growth, excuse me, for students with disabilities, but that also means we have a lot of room to grow, I think, a lot of room to grow, and a lot of high expectations to continue to have here. So with that, we'll talk a little bit about People Services. When you think of People Services, most people think special education, and that's true. That's a lot of what my department does, but there's a whole lot of other things that we do. So I like to say we support students with learning differences, and that might be anything from special needs preschool to special education to English language learners, but we also support students with non-academic barriers to learning, and sometimes those are just as, if not more, challenging. We offer health and nurse services. We have our school social workers. We have a substance abuse prevention specialist, and the one thing that seems to be a little bit more and more every year are children and families who are homeless in our district, and the challenges, you can imagine, of getting up and getting to school knowing that you're not sure where you're going to sleep later on that evening. So those are the areas that I'm going to talk about a little bit, and it always starts with preschool, age three. So this year, if you're thinking about our district, we have 15 elementary schools. We have classes, special needs preschool classes, in eight of our 15 elementary schools. We started off this year with 19 classroom spaces across those eight schools, and we have 364 total students ages 3 to 5 in our preschool. We anticipate ending the year with about 420, needing 21 classroom spaces, so we try very hard to find them at the beginning of the year and hold on to them, but as you know, it's tough in our district. But in comparison, we had 325 students this time last year. So that's a pretty significant increase, and I guess concerns that I have moving forward. I know that we're supposed to be flat at that level, and, you know, our job, as it says down there at the bottom, we have to have an evaluation done and an IEP, an Individualized Education Program, in place by the child's third birthday. So we're working with a lot of two-year-olds to prepare for their third birthday, but 364 is a pretty big number, and we, they keep, they keep coming. There's approximately 145 of those are our peer role models, and about 200, well, exactly 219 are students with disabilities. We offer an AM and a PM session, and also an extended day program for kids with, I guess, varying needs and ability levels. The next slide, I try to put in here annually, and this is our special education profile from the Ohio Department of Education. You can absolutely look at all of it. I tried to highlight a couple of different parts, areas of growth, but also areas of success, and that very top one is preschool. LRE stands for Least Restrictive Environment in an Early Childhood Education Program. You can see that we didn't meet those, and the reason for that is we, years ago, had decided that we were going to offer programs with six peers and six students with disabilities, but also programs with eight students with disabilities and four peers. And when this new indicator came out, what it's telling us is the state is looking for us to do more of that 50-50 model, like that six and six model, and that's why you see our Least Restrictive Environment is 45% of students. So what we've decided to do for a couple of different reasons is we're, instead of doing an eight and four and a six and six, we're going to have all of our programs be seven and seven, and that does increase the number, but it does a couple of things. We worked a lot with our preschool teachers. That will allow us to accommodate more students in a class, which will reduce the number of classrooms that we need, but it will also allow us to achieve these particular indicators. And my first conversations with the preschool teachers, things are going extremely well. I know people always get nervous when you talk about increasing, but I believe we're in a good position to be able to do that, and we have a good rationale as to why. The next one that you can see circled, that's another area that we have to improve, for sure, and it's AYP Reading Proficiency Rate. So you can see the goal from the state is 94% or greater, and our result was 81%. What that means is 81% of the students on IEPs passed the reading portion of the proficiency test. 69.9% passed the math proficiency test. A year ago, we were 80.3, so we went up one percentile in reading, and we were 87, or 88.7, so we went up approximately 1.2% in math. That's not good enough, and we know that. We also know that kids come in with varying, with different challenges. Again, every kid is different, so we also look at the projections. We want to make sure that kids are meeting or exceeding their projections. So if they're not projected to pass, we want them to at least hit their projections, and then we know what we need to do, what we need to do next for them in both reading and math. Reading is definitely a focus, but in math, 12 points lower. We have to do better there. If you look down below, Least Restrictive Environment, this is something I'm extremely proud of with Olentangy. 82% of our students with disabilities are educated in the regular education classroom environment. So eight out of 10 are in the regular classroom, 80% or more of their day. Now that's up a couple percentage points, actually just 1.2 from last year, but the number I want to point out is that 6.62. That's students who are in more of a self-contained environment, so in the regular classroom less than 40% of the time. And the reason I point that out is, over the past couple of years, we've seen an increase of number of students with disabilities, but particularly those with significant needs. A lot of students with multiple disabilities, most significant cognitive disabilities, and students with autism. And with students with autism, again, autism is a spectrum disorder, so if you, I saw a great bumper sticker the other day, "If you've met one person with autism, you've met one person with autism." So, and that's kind of the way we look at it. Different kids have different needs. And the reason I point that out is, over the past couple of years, we've seen an increase of number of students with disabilities, but particularly those with significant needs. A lot of students with multiple disabilities, most significant cognitive disabilities, and students with autism. And with students with autism, again, autism is a spectrum disorder, so if you, I saw a great bumper sticker the other day, if you've met one person with autism, you've met one person with autism. So, and that's kind of the way we, we look at it. Different kids have, have different needs. And a lot of the kids that we're seeing have higher needs. They require more adult support, more aid support. So the number there, 6.62, is actually up from 5.8 a year ago. And I, I guess I don't know where it's going to go. I'd like to keep it right, right about there if, if at all possible. The next one is, is an interesting one. The state changed the way that we look at graduation for students with disabilities. It used to be, and the federal law says a child with a disability can stay in public education through the age of 21. Well, that still remains the same, but what we do now is we calculate graduation rate based on the number of students that graduate after four years. And that presents a problem, because if kids are entitled to stay a fifth, a sixth, a seventh, and an eighth year, then why are we getting hit on a graduation rate? But everybody in the state is getting that. So you see a 90.29 rate of graduation, but that's also why you see a 0% dropout. Our kids aren't dropping out. We just have a high number of kids with significant disabilities that require an additional year or two or three in, in our system. Last year, I talked to you about a Powell program. And that's a program in downtown Powell. We collaborate with a lot of businesses down there and that's an internship program. So our goal is to get those kids at 18, 19, 20 jobs, so they can transition out of our district and into the adult world. And then indicator 11 is one that we're very proud of, but it's also extremely difficult. And that's called Child Find Timely Initial Evaluations. 100% of our initial evaluations, that means when we get consent from a parent, we're able to conduct that evaluation within 60 days, 100% of the time. And I didn't get that number, but it's somewhere in the ballpark of 250 or 260 evaluations that we complete. About 85% of children qualify and about 15% of those don't qualify for special ed services. But we were 99.2 the year before. I think we missed two. So our goal is always 100% and that's the target. I used this graphic last year and said we've got a few more data points. So this is where we've been since September of 2012. We had 1,839 students with disabilities. I try to track it about the same time every year, three times a year. I did four times last year. But you can see that we were 1,839 in 2012. We ended the year at 2,063. We added 224 students with disabilities in a year. Now that means we've got kids moving in, but the majority of those are kids that we seek out with parent assistance, with teacher assistance, with outside provider assistance, and we do an evaluation and those students are qualifying. You see the dip at graduation. And that means kids who leave us at the end of the school year and go to another district or they graduate, or they age out at the age of 22. We start the school year at a dip and then we continue to grow. So we lost 73 students at graduation. We added 193 students last year. So up 224, down 73, up 193. We lost 53 students this year. So we, if we continue to grow right about there, we'll have about another 200 students of another, what, 2,330 or 40 students by the end of this school year. That poses a challenge, because we try to start off as efficient as possible with our intervention specialists, but we tend to add long-term subs as ratios increase. One thing I guess I want to point out there as well, when we talk about, you know, we have, we have 20 elementary specialized learning centers. That's for kids with our most significant disabilities. We had 18 last year. They continue to move in. We have eight middle school and seven high school specialized learning centers. So with that, with kids who need a lower rate staff to student ratio, like autism for example, the ratio is one to six. We had a family, two families move in last year. They brought with them five students with autism. So right there is basically an entire program. They were spread out with grades, but in, in two days. The other thing that is going to, we'll talk about later in terms of additional intervention specialists, is our support for kids with dyslexia who require one-on-one or small group reading. And, and that ends up taking up a lot of the intervention specialist's time and kids on their caseload and we need to be able to provide that service to those kids who need it as well. Every child is different and so it's really hard to, to talk about, you know, kids with disabilities in general. Here's our special education professional development. We've got 115 staff members over the past three years that have at least 30 hours worth of coursework in Orton-Gillingham structured language approach. There's a little misconception out there about what that looks like. And so basically, here's how it breaks down. You have 30 hours of coursework. Once you have 30 hours of coursework, you are now prepared to start a supervised practicum under our district dyslexia specialist. And during that supervised practicum, you work one-on-one or in small groups with kids. Not all 115 staff members are, are going through that supervised practicum, but what we believe is that 30 hours of coursework is something we want to get to as many of our teachers as possible, because that will allow them to apply the knowledge that they have on how children learn to read, those children who learn differently than maybe other students. So we have about, you need 30 clock hours of coursework, 50 practicum hours with students, and five observations to even be eligible to apply to get certification. That's just one level, the classroom educator. The associate level is 60 class hours, 100 practicum hours, and 10 observations. You have to do it over 11 consecutive months. It's got to be in a small group or one-on-one and 40 minutes two times a week. It takes time, but we continue to work through that and we're very proud of where we, where we are and where we're going. We have about 400 staff members with 15-plus hours of coursework from the Ohio Center for Autism and Low Incidence. They approached us the other day because we're the largest user in, I believe, the United States with their online modules. And we hope to be able to partner with them for them to come out to our district and do videos of evidence-based practices in our classroom, so they can put those online in other districts and, and other states and watch those and hopefully improve their practice. We have additional professional development in various areas. I keep pointing out executive functions and I'm really proud, we're piloting a, an executive function skill-building program from the Rush Neuro-Behavioral Center. So we talked about that a little bit last year. Basically, we need to help kids improve their ability to plan, organize, manage behavior, make decisions, manage their time, emotional control, impulse control, those kinds of things. That, that goes a long way in helping them be successful, not only in school here in Ole and Tangi, but in life. And then training for intervention aids. We have about 100 intervention aids in this district and we need to continue to provide them high-quality professional development, because they work so closely with our kids with, with our most significant needs. Areas for future work, I added the first bullet, because I think that is, that continues to set a, a high bar. If we've earned A and value-added for students with disabilities now two years in a row, then the expectation is you get it three years in a row and four years in a row, just like the, the posters that you see along the wall there. So, we're very proud of that, but we have a, a long road to go with that as well. Response to intervention, we had an RTI audit done a couple of years ago. We have a lot of work to do there. I had presented to you a while before to talk about AmesWeb, and that really hit home to me today. Needed to go to the doctor, blood pressure check. They weighed me and the doctor asked me some questions. I was in and out of there in about 15 minutes. Great well visit. It's my second appointment at this particular doctor, so the first time would be a screening. The second time, now he's progress monitoring. He's comparing very quick pieces of data. And if something would have been off, and that's what AmesWeb does, if something is off, that tells us there's something going on and we need to investigate further. So if my blood pressure would have been significantly different, he's going to order blood work. And that's what we're looking to do in the district. Short, quick screenings happen three times a year. And if something is wrong, that will alert us earlier and we can dive into more, more deep diagnostics to better understand what the learning difficulty is that that child is having. The multisensory reading in Orton-Gillingham, that's something that we need to continue to work on, as I mentioned before. If 82% of our kids with disabilities are in a regular education classroom, 80% or more of the time, we have to do a better job of professional development with regular ed staff. They're out in their class all the time, so we need to make sure they understand how to differentiate and meet the needs of all kids with learning differences. And then the last one, I'm so proud of our special ed parent mentor program. Loray Nesbit and Fran Gardner are outstanding. They are parents of children with disabilities in our district and they help us bridge the gap when there are issues between the district and the parents. So she can sit down, either Loray or Fran, and talk to a parent. And I tell them, I need you to tell me, play it right down the middle, because if I'm not seeing something, then, then I need you to tell me. I don't want you to tell me what I want to hear. I want you to tell me what we're missing and help us fill that gap. But the same goes for the other side too. If, if the parent is missing, maybe what the district's message is, help us clarify that, so we can continue to move forward. We know kids make more progress and there's a great relationship between home and school. So the next meeting that they have is a quarterly parent meeting on September 29th at 6:30 at Orange Township Library. The Coalition for Children with Disabilities will be there to talk about advocacy. We have 300 limited English proficient students. That means they are unable to communicate effectively in English, because primary language is not English and they're not yet fluent. What do we say, about 700 kids came into the district this year? 300 of those 700 speak another language in the home. So, I'm not exactly sure where that trend is going, but if almost half of the kids coming into our district speak another language in the home, that, that tells us something. Now, what we do is we evaluate those students for English as a second language and figure out which ones are actually limited English proficient. So you start to weed that out. Not, not all 300 will be LEP, 50 languages. We give them professional development, very similar. And we offer ELL, which is English Language Learners, as if I need to throw one more thing up there. 101 to, for professional development to staff members, so they can better serve kids. And imagine a student who, who shows up in your classroom one day and doesn't speak English and your job is to educate that child. It's a difficult task. Health and nursing services, two quick highlights. We had health heroes come in as a pilot program and gives us, give us a vaccination clinic. The goal with that was to provide a great community service to our teachers and to our families in the district. For two days, teams of nurses from this company came in, no charge, they work directly with insurance, so no copay. And this gives parents an opportunity to have their child vaccinated while they're at school. That way, they don't necessarily have to find a time in an evening or a weekend to go to the doctor's office. The stats for that are in, I guess I better turn the page here. And we had 3,990 flu vaccinations given. That ends up being about 18 and a half percent of our staff and students. When I went to learn about this, to see if we wanted to do it, they said you'd get about 10% of, of elementary, about 7% of middle school, and about 5% of high school. So we did a, I think we did a great job. We're not without challenges. It didn't go perfectly, but it's something we're going to sit back and evaluate and see. Did people like it? I got my mist right down the hallway. I was in and out. That averages about four students a minute, is what we were able to do. So you think about time out of the classroom. There were some that lasted longer, but approximately four students a minute is how quickly they were, they were able to go through that. And House Bill 296, again, I think a service for our students and staff. And this one's tricky, so I want to be clear here. It does not require school districts to obtain EpiPens, but it allows us to have them. And this is not a replacement for a child who has an EpiPen. We still need those to come to school. But this is for a child or a staff member who we don't know has a life-threatening allergy, whether that's to food or bee stings or whatnot. So this will allow us to administer epinephrine and possibly save a life, whereas before we might have to call the squad and that might not be in time. So we're working through that process to get free EpiPens for the district, to develop a board policy, which you should see here in the next couple of months, and get those into our buildings. Our school social workers and substance abuse, offering professional development for Michael Nerny just a couple of days ago on trends of substance abuse and de-stressing. They've worked extremely hard on suicide prevention, intervention policies and guidelines. We hope that that never happens. But if an attempt would happen, we as a district need to know exactly what we're going to do. That's one of those times in your life where you, you think you know what you're going to do until it actually happens. So we need to practice and prepare and make sure that we do that the right way, because that's the most important thing in a, in a family. Substance abuse, we need to provide, we will, individual and group educational sessions around substance abuse, community outreach, and definitely family reach or support and resource. Our substance abuse prevention specialist's name is James West and he's been doing a fantastic job in the time when he's, that he's been here. And finally, the, the homeless. We talked about that a little bit. The McKinney-Vento Act says, if you lack fixed, regular, adequate nighttime residence, then you need to continue to attend either the school of origin, where you started, or the school where you're residing. And if you're homeless, you can think in a shelter, if you're doubled up, if you're sleeping in a car, in a public place. So, we, we get a call from a, from a family. It could be something, their house burned down and they're displaced. We need to provide transportation. We do free meals and other services, because a child loses four to six months of academic progress with every school transfer. So we, and I'll praise Jody Clark, I try to do it as, as much as I can. They do such an amazing job in, in the food service. They do a great job making sure that that kid is at school. If they're in Delaware or Westerville, they need to get to school that very next day. They can't miss a day of school. It's just not going to be good. They got enough problems, coming to school is not one of them. And actually, the number's not 11, it's, it's 14. We, I got a call today. And, and so there's another family that we need to continue to work with. So, I'm sure I went over my time, but with, with, with that, are there any questions that I can, that I can answer or any clarifying statements that I may be able to give you?
Okay. Mr. Rogers? Great job.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next up is a transportation update. Jody Clark, Transportation Department.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to address the board tonight. Wade said, you know, that we did have a great start to the school and he didn't get any phone calls. That's my goal. Honestly, this, the first year of my, this will be my fourth year in the district. And honestly, I can say, even in our transportation office, the calls were less this year than they have been any other year. So, with that, I would like to say that I am so proud of my transportation staff. They do a outstanding job, you know, with the kids in the district, making sure they get to and from, and from point A to point B. We had an excellent week, you know, first week. All the students were delivered by 5:15 PM. The, the district staff or the office staff worked very hard, long hours over the summer to redo the routes and make sure all the, the kids were assigned to a bus and all the routes were covered. This year, we implemented something a little different. We did what we call a dry run. A dry run was, after our district in-service this year, we had all the drivers go out and park at all the buildings, just like we were going to run an afternoon route. The goal for that was, is to see if, where we had any issues with timings or somebody that could not get to their next building on time. They ran the routes from not only the public schools, the non-public schools as well. So on July 30th, there were a bunch of buses out on the road and they were all doing those things. So I think that that aided in our excellent start for this year. I think we're going to continue to do that, because it, it was a positive for everybody. Annual inspection from the State Patrol, nearly 99% passed this year of our buses. Our mechanics did an excellent job in, in prepping the buses for that, and that is a improvement over last year. So, hats off to them. They do a great job in keeping our vehicles in good condition. Over the past three years, the district has added nearly 2,000 students. I know that we've had, you know, 700 students this year. I think we had about that last year. So altogether, about 2,000. And we're continuing to see that increase, as Chris said, in the special education transportation needs as well. We, you know, take them from point A to point B. They have needs that need to be met and we need to get them there. So, we're seeing an increase that, as, you know, in our department as well. For the past two years, we've maintained our buses at 142 routes. This year, we added three additional routes. So that kind of talks about the increase in the special education transportation needs and the non-public schools that we transport to. We service, and with that said, we service, and you may or may not know this, but we service 23 different non-public and special program schools above and beyond our public school buildings. That includes about an additional 1,000 students on top of the public students that we have in our district, that we have to accommodate. During like the 13, 14 school year, our department last year- During like the 13, 14 school year, our department last year accommodated about 3,500 extracurricular field trips, taking the kids to their sports and their activities. They drove about 148,477 additional miles to the 10,000 that they drive daily in the district. So, we're traveling some miles and we're running those buses a lot. Some of the challenges that we faced this year, of course, you know, the construction saga continues. If any of you have been in the Polaris area, you know that, or the 23 area, you just can't get anywhere without seeing the orange barrels and some smaller lanes and traffic jams. We had the home road and section line, that has been completed now, just, I think, about a week ago. So we had that. The Lewis Center RotoTrax was a joy that kind of came up all of a sudden, where they closed both sides of the tracks. They usually don't do that. But they closed the back section and the main section, which was a little bit of a challenge to get buses to the schools on time. But, you know, we kind of worked around it and do what we can. Big Walnut was another one. You're adding lanes there at the Big Walnut-Louis Center intersection. So Big Walnut Road closed for 30 days. It still is closed. We took over the Labor Day weekend and rerouted the buses and contacted parents that were affected by those. We're still working out some timing things there, but we anticipate, once that opens up, things will go back to normal. So, about, I guess, you know, to begin the school year, we had like five open routes from people who either, you know, retired, or actually, three of those are the additional routes that we had. We've nearly filled about all of those now. So our staff has been working very diligently with HR and Jen Iceman. We've been interviewing constantly, you know, getting applications in to fill those positions. And our on-bus instructors have done an excellent job over the summer, training new drivers and getting them ready to drive the buses and the children. With that being said, the next thing is the handout that I give you, and it talks about the bus replacement plan. Kind of reworked this a little bit from the time that Mr. Thompson did it. You'll notice on here, the numbers prior to the 2014-15 are actual numbers of buses that were put into service for those years. For 1415, on the numbers reflect my recommendation regarding the number of new buses needed to maintain a fully functional fleet. Beginning in 2014-15 through the 1819 school year, the number reflects 13, you know, regular buses, and then a handicap bus each of those years, to accommodate for the increase in the special needs that we're seeing in the special transportation. The district currently owns 164 buses. We currently have 19 spares. Eight of those are regular spares, which are split between the two compounds. We have eight over at Liberty and eight over at Berkshire. And three of those are handicap spares. The accepted practice across, you know, school transportation industry is to maintain 15% of the total fleet as the regular spares, not including your handicap buses. Because if you have a regular school bus either break down or in-service, you have to have that size of a bus to accommodate the students that you pick up for a breakdown. The 15% would be about 25 buses of the fleet of the 164 that we have right now, which would give us about 12 to 13 spares on each side of the district to utilize for regular routes, extracurricular activities, and the routine maintenance that needs to be done on the buses. Given our current status, we're setting at about 10% of the fleet with regular spares, 16 of the 164, to accommodate the buses that are down for repair, the maintenance and the field trips that are being run, at the same time that the regular routes are being The second page is, you know, it isn't unusual for a over-the-road truck diesel that does long hauls to get 300,000 or 400,000 out of an engine, but the case is not true with a school bus that does the stop-and-go and the stop-and-go all the time. It's hard on a vehicle, you know, for sitting in the compound during the summer. That increases some of those things, because sometimes when they're not run, just like your car, if it sets for a long time, you might have a dead battery. So, that is why the school bus's life expectancy is somewhere between the average of 10 to 13 years, and about 175,000 to 200,000 miles for the time that we're ready to look at replacing the buses. The Ohio Department of Education recommends a bus replacement between 10 and 12 years for maximum efficiency and cost effectiveness. In 1996-97, we purchased 11 buses, and in the following three years, you'll notice on the graph, in 1997, '98, '98, '99, '99, 2000, we purchased a total only seven buses. With those three years of minimal or no purchase at all, resulted in having to purchase 15 buses in 2000 and 2001. These units here have surpassed the 13-year average life of the bus that we're seeing. Also, you might note that the years of 2003, '04, and 2004, and 2005, we purchased 20 in '03, '04, and 24 in '04, '05. Those are quickly approaching that 13-year projection as well. So by keeping the purchasing plan consistent, it would allow the district to have a more proactive approach, okay? So with that said, I'm recommending the board purchase 14 more buses through the fiscal year 19 budget. Last year, just to let you know, or if you don't remember, by purchasing buses prior to January 1st, the district saved 10,000 on those. And it is our goal to reap the early bird savings as long as those are available to us. And we'll do, we would like to purchase buses before the end of the year, after the MEC bid comes out and is approved. So at this time, I would answer any questions that you might have on that.
Where are the buses going? An auction website?
That is correct.
Who usually buys them?
Various people. We have all kinds of vendors. Jeff's office actually handles the website. We get the buses over there, we give them a, you know, a spreadsheet of what they are, and they sell those buses. They bid on them.
Do we have any piggyback routes with other school districts this year? Like, in years past, we've been able to piggyback with like a Westerville to take kids to Academy, Columbus Academy. Are we able to work that out this year with our other public schools going to private schools?
We currently are not doing that. We did team up with Worthington last year, but that ended last year. So we are transporting students ourselves. Westerville does not transport Columbus Academy, I believe. So I have been looking at those. I do talk to other districts. The only one that we do team up right now is still Worthington with some of the OLP students that we do. So, you know, we're always talking about those things and trying to figure out how we help each other. I do a little bit for Buckeye Valley, you know, like to St. Bridget.
So, I don't know if this is for Ms. Clark or Mr. Curran. How does the 14 compare to the capital part? What do we have?
Previously, it was 10 each of those years of us go out. So, it's one thing we have to evaluate every year, see if it matches up with the capital dollars, along with all the other needs in the district as far as roofs, payment, and everything else.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you. Great job. Okay, next agenda items, item 11, Public Participation Session Number Two. Okay, I will then present the board action items. We have actions A and B. And I guess we have to do them separately. So we present board action item A, which is to approve the alternate delegate to the OSBA conference, and that had previously been Ms. Dunbar, who stepped down from the board, so we now have an opening. And I believe Mr. Bartz is interested in taking that slot.
Because I'm the delegate for the Career Center.
Okay, now I'm the delegate already. So, I'd entertain a motion, or actually, I'll nominate Mr. Bartz as the alternate delegate to the OSBA conference.
So moved.
I'll second it, if I can.
Yeah.
Any discussion?
The delegate goes to the main board meeting of the Ohio School Boards Association, but all of us are able to attend the conference, and we usually, most of us do go.
It's downtown.
It's downtown, it's a great conference.
The vendor fair.
Yeah.
Okay, so we had a motion second, no discussion. Please call her on.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
If it's not too pretentious to vote for myself, yes.
Sorry. Mr. King?
Yes.
And Mr. White?
Yes.
Okay, passes 5-0. I'll now present board action item B, which is to approve the lease for the building at 7774 Graphics Way in Lewis Center, Ohio.
I'll move.
I'll second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that this came about as a 2020 group was doing its work. And I know Dave was one of the group, one of the people in 2020 that even toured other buildings. I mean, I think most of us toured this building, but Dave, you looked at even warehouse space to see if that could be of any use to us. And, you know, that was cost prohibitive, I think, because of the retrofitting. But, you know, I toured the building when 2020 was looking at it. And it's just, I think Roger and I were at the Facilities Committee meeting last week, and one of the Facilities Committee members said, "It's just a perfect building."
It's a unique building. Are we considering?
If I could add, too, that the leases before the board tonight was, the board, when we talked about this before, we were very aggressive with the lease, to make sure the district had the most out of the lease, that we had protection, that we had options to allow us to be flexible in this process. So it was, it's far different than what the landlord had originally asked for, and that's credit to the board for being strong in that position. So, and Mr. Gordon and his work with the, Mr. Curran with his work with potential.
And when we first toured the building, it was to purchase the building. And when you, yeah, and that was, I can't even remember how long ago we toured it.
It was cold.
Yeah. It was cold. They didn't have the heat on. But, you know, at that point, you know, if you purchased the building, I guess you could take it out of the general fund, but you wouldn't want to. That ties up a lot of your money. And, you know, we're not looking to go to the voters for additional bond money at this point. So, I even, you know, back when we had built buildings in years past, people had even come up to me and say, "Have you looked at renting classroom space from Worthington?" Because Worthington was closing down buildings, so you can't do that. But by leasing a building, it gives us a lot of flexibility to see, A, if we're going to need additional space with, by purchasing a building. And B, it doesn't tie up our capital.
Right.
Well, as Kevin mentioned in the beginning, it's such a strategic location. It's central, easy to get to.
And it already has an "O" on it.
So it gives us everything.
Yeah.
You have to reconfigure the "O."
Yeah.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. Mr. Curran, please call her on.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
That item passes 5-0. Mr. Curran, will you present the Treasury's action items?
Yes. On the seating's agenda, I'd like to recommend Treasury Action Items A, which is approving the extension of Letter of Engagement with Aon Hewitt for benefit consulting services, and B, approving agreement for wellness services with Mount Carmel Health System.
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion?
I just wanted to point out that this agreement with Mount Carmel, I just wanted to remind people, we already have an agreement with Ohio Health to provide our athletic trainers. And then we have an agreement with Ohio State to provide our strength and conditioning people. And so now by adding Mount Carmel Health, we've got the three major health systems actively involved in our school district. So, I think that's a good thing to have.
Anything else? Okay, please call her on.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. That item passes 5-0. Dr. Lucas, you're going to present Superintendent Action Item.
I do. Before I do that, I want to get back to Mr. Bartz's question about the reduction of liability insurance needs, or that is no. If we were starting from scratch, and we didn't have the cameras, it would, but we're just replacing those cameras. It will not reduce our insurance rates, but I do present Superintendent Action Items A and B for approval, please.
I'll move.
Second.
Any discussion? Please call her on.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
This is the first time we've had a unanimous agenda. I'll now entertain a motion to go into executive session. We're entering executive session as permitted by Ohio Raiz Code to discuss the employment of public employees, as well as to discuss the purchase of property. There will be no action taken when we return, and we will just return in adjournment. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Just call her on.
Mrs. Fiesel?
Yes.
Mr. Bartz?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
All right, thank you for joining us.
September 25th.
September 25th is our meeting.